Okay, the first item on our agenda is the consent portion. And this means expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, you want me to just? I think I have the number. I'll read it off. Item A, consideration of audit approved claims for payment for August 19th, 2015, through September 1st, 2015. B, consideration of administrative adjustments, real property. C, consideration of administrative adjustments, personal property. D, consideration of application for property abatement with the exception of item number Is that the same one that we pulled? And that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Just for clarification, the tax ID number on that was I-SCW-1-17, which was being pulled.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the 2014 audited financial statements.
Chairman, just point of order. Since this was pulled from the agenda, this needs to be our first item on the.
Oh, okay. You're right, thank you. Okay, we have this application that was pulled from the agenda. And so I'm assuming that we want to refuse this.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and make a motion that we deny consideration for adjustment to property tax abatement for the property tax ID number I-SCW-1-17.
I second that. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, and we'll have an audited financial statement from Mike Spilker from Hinton-Birdie.
Good afternoon, honorable county commissioners and county staff. Again, my name is Mike Spilker. I'm a partner with Hinton-Birdie CPAs and advisors. We've conducted the county's financial statement audit for the year ended December 31, 2014. And it's a pleasure for me to do a very brief presentation of that audit, results of that for you here this afternoon. For 2014, the county expended over $500,000 in federal funds, and so you were also required to have a federal single audit. And there's a separate document that we've issued for that. There were no findings or recommendations related to that federal single audit, so we issued a clean opinion for that single audit. Also, as well, for the county financial audit. The financial audit is, in Utah, that require you to do what we call a yellow book audit. That requires us to look at state compliance laws and regulations, as well as some of the federal laws and regulations. And so we've issued our report on the financial statements, which is on page 1 through 3, and that also is a clean opinion. It states that we have examined the financial statements and some of the underlying numbers and conducted our audit and found that these financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with governmental auditing or governmental accounting standards. And also, in the back of the report on page 93 through 94, is our report on the compliance with state and federal laws and regulations. And there were no significant instances of non-compliance noted during the audit. Our findings and recommendation letter is included there, and it's fairly significant. We audit, I believe, over 120 entities throughout the year, and there's only a handful that we have a clean opinion as far as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the financial statement prep and the audit adjustments. We only found a handful of audit adjustments, so I think your staff can be commended for that. There's been significant progress over the years, and that's a big feather in the county's cap, I believe. So with this year, there were only three minor state compliance findings. I believe those were mainly the result of some new standards that were implemented during the year. Seems like every year, the state auditor comes up with some new rules and regulations for us to take a look at. And so as we kind of, as we get up to speed and the county gets up to speed, we have a couple of those. Kim Hayfon has provided his response to those findings, and that's in the back of the document. Just really briefly, a couple of highlights, I guess if you will. These are found in the management and discussion and analysis in the document, which is prepared by your staff. Sales tax revenues for 2014 increased by 6.8 percent. Transient room taxes increased by 18.1 percent. Restaurant taxes increased by 9.1 percent. So some fairly significant increases there, which is a nice change from what we've experienced for several years in a row in not-so-recent past. Total revenues for the county as a whole were 66.2 million, and the cost of all the programs of the county were 58.9 million. So during the year, you had a net increase in equity or the net position of the county. Also, just real quickly, on page 43, there's a summary of all the county's debt. It shows that the county, through regularly scheduled debt service payments, decreased the outstanding debt by 6 million in 2014, down from 47 down to 41 million. Also, another positive note, lots of positive things. It's always a pleasure to do an audit presentation when there's so many positives.
We'll invite you back again. You'll come next time.
So on page 56, we report the detail of the general fund budget actual. And total revenues that came in during 2014 were just shy of a million dollars more than what were anticipated. And then also, on the expenditure side, the total expenditures for the general fund were 926,000 less than you budgeted. So a very positive swing there and indicative of the management of the cash disbursements and outlays of the county during the year, so another positive thing. We've already talked about the findings and recommendations, single audit, few highlights. Are there any questions?
Okay. That sounds good.
We appreciate very much the opportunity to work with the county, and I look forward to another good report next year.
We congratulate Kim and his staff. That's a great, great report there.
Job well done.
Thanks, appreciate you.
And I wanted to say some, we really appreciate the Hinton-Birdie's group. They've been with us for a number of years and very professionally come in, get their work done, and get out of our hair, which is always nice. I also wanted to let you know to the public, our financial report is on our website. I think we have the last 10 years' reports there, as well as you can go through the state's website for the transparency, and you can see all the detail of all our transactions that are posted online, so anyway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trevor.
When you jump online and take a look at that statement, if you have any questions, feel free to give us a call or shoot me an email. There's a lot of information there.
And also with Mike's group, his lead auditor is Crimson Singleton, and she kind of runs the show for Mike. And we rely on these guys quite heavily throughout the year and answer questions, new changes, stuff like that, so we really appreciate them.
Thanks, okay, thank you. Okay, Mark Lynch, there's some purchases.
We have three of them today. The first one is for IT, is for a new Surfer Blade, and that one is a budget, is in their budget, and it is for $24,782.25. The next one we have is for the road department. It's for a new 15-foot hydraulic flex mower. And this, they're also trading in their old mower in on this new one. And so the balance that they'll be purchasing is $22,067.65, and that is also in their budget for this year. The last one I have is for the sheriff department, and this is for a new steamer there in the kitchen. And it is also in their budget for this, and it's $13,559.3. So those are the three.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes when you think about the jail, you forget it. You have to feed all those people out there, too.
Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then that we approve the purchase request as outlined by Network. It's just outlined?
I second that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, our number three item is consideration of ordinance number 2015-10520, an ordinance authorizing the appeal process, the appeal of personal property tax-related interest penalties and fees.
It's Tom, or are you going to speak to him?
Natalie's here, and she's the one that's worked on this. She can speak to it. It's a good way to break Natalie and Natalie.
Thanks, Eric. So we drafted this ordinance because it says in the Utah code that in order to grant any sort of exception or reduction of property, personal property tax-related interest fees and penalties, that the county has to adopt their own ordinance to provide a mechanism to do that, and that's what this outlines right here. Do you guys have any questions about it?
And so this doesn't, this doesn't actually allow the commissioners to waive a tax. That's all statutorily down by the state. But if for some reason you guys would see fit to reduce an interest that's been collected on an overdue tax or something, this lays out a process that anybody can come in and follow to apply for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we appreciate this. It's important to have. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt ordinance number 2015-1052-0, an ordinance authorizing the appeal of personal property tax-related interest penalties and fees.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Item number four, consideration of ordinance number 2015-1053-0, an ordinance amending the Washington County accessory dwelling ordinance.
Okay, for some time now, the staff has been working with the planning commission on making some modifications. The way it's previously been is we've had several definitions or terms for more or less the same thing. In accessory dwelling, you know, you hear the term mother-in-law apartment, casita. We have the term second dwelling. And what we decided to do is we decided to condense the number of terms, or consolidate the number of terms that we use. And so we're, everything now is an accessory dwelling. And so the accessory dwelling is any living space, whether it's detached, you know, it can be up above a garage. Some people have bonus rooms that they'll put in up above their garages. One of the other things that we did with this code change is, in our current ordinance, it had a maximum square footage of 900 feet for that space. And we were wanting to look to see what people are wanting to build. And there's a lot of requests out there, and people wanting to build larger, you know, home sizes in general tend to, are on the rise. And with that accessory dwelling unit size seems to be the desire is there to increase that. And so we've removed that restriction for the 900 maximum square footage for the accessory dwelling on that. One of the things that we had in the code, now even though we've consolidated some of the terms, we have language in there that defines some of. We had in areas, some of the larger agricultural or areas where there might be ranching or farms, we've allowed dwellings, a second dwelling to be built on the property, and that's usually for hired hands or rent help. And due to the size of those properties, they were permitted to have separate utilities for that. And so we still allow that. We got rid of that term second dwelling and still call it an accessory dwelling, but in those larger acreage zones, we are allowing people to have the separate utilities there. And I'll be, that's kind of the overview of it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So if they get separate utilities for another building, that would qualify as an accessory dwelling, or it would?
It would.
Okay.
Any more questions?
No, I think, I appreciate the changes that you've put into this. I think it reflects what the county commission's balance of property rights, even though you're taking away the square footage minimums, you know, accessory dwelling or casitas or whatever you want to call it will still fall under all of our building code setbacks. And so I think it's a good balance. I think it's a better balance than what we've had.
We had, oh, sorry, one of the other things that we had in there that we, there were some inconsistencies, or we just tried to make it more clear. We had in some zones where, under the conditional uses, it listed it an accessory dwelling or a second dwelling, but then in other zones it didn't. But then in another section of code where it defined what an accessory dwelling was, it called out all the zones. And so we're like, let's make sure that all the zones that are called out in there have it listed as an accessory dwelling under the conditional use in that land use zone. And so we went through and made those kinds of changes to make sure that it's the same in each of the land use ordinance or zones.
If I could just quickly, commissioners, just for the minutes, there are a few changes in here from, as it was recommended from the planning commission. Most of those are technical and don't change the substance. They're just, were for readability purposes. But the size restriction, when it came up from the planning commission, the size restriction was still in there, but through some conversations with you guys individually, the version before you right now doesn't have that in there. We felt like that was going to better reflect what you guys wanted.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2015-1053-0, an ordinance amending the Washington County accessory dwelling ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, item number five, consideration of resolution number R2015-1933, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and the City of Santa Clara regarding transferring ownership of a parcel of real property to the City of Santa Clara. Dean, do you want to?
Now, this is what I'm thinking of, right, Eric?
This is what you're thinking of. Wait, wait, wait. How do you know what he's thinking?
I'm not good. We're at two.
Apparently so.
He was thinking this one last time.
Yeah. Mister, this is a piece of property that came to the county as a result of the tax. So it lies down in the flood plain of the Santa Clara River and is not suitable for building in many other types of construction. And so the owner, I guess, ceased to pay taxes on that and title reverted to the county. Santa Clara City has expressed an interest in acquiring that piece of property for recreational purposes. That would be consistent with its character and location, and would be my recommendation that the commission grant that deed to the City of Santa Clara for that purpose.
Just to add to that, I drove out and looked at the property, and this would be a good property to give to the city. It's in the flood plain, and so there really is no added value except for recreation, just nature.
Okay, good. I'm ready for motion.
Well, I'll make a, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number R2015-1933, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and the City of Santa Clara regarding transferring ownership of parcel of real property to the City of Santa Clara.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next item is commissioners' report. You can go ahead.
Obviously, I mentioned about the revenues that a lot of the people started seeing in the community. This is a thing that, you know, throughout the mention of recovery is coming up, and so we were doing a ceremony today about that, and the big thing was just encouraging people to talk to about recovery and about drug use within their family and other people about it. So I would just echo that. We support that.
Drug use, sort of the recovery, recovery, yeah. Whatever, whatever the addiction may be, yeah. It was something very worthwhile.
The only thing I'd like to mention is the Shooting Sports Park, which I hope everybody kind of knows where it's at. You keep going past the fairgrounds, but we have our meeting this week, and they're doing some fun things out there. We're going to get a nice big gate sign out there and purchase some signs. The goal is really to continue to help the public know that this is the public park that they can go and shoot at, and I think we have some great people working there on that. So excited about the big sign.
All right. It's okay, Public Works Road Business Ron.
Ron, Ron. Ron hasn't left us all like six.
That's right. All right, we'll wait to hear a report from him in two weeks, and Scott, County Development and Planning.
I'll take the next 20 minutes to go through all the items that I have listed there. No, I just wanted to touch on a couple of items that we've been, had several amended plats come through. One of them was Dixie Deer Estates. And what it was is it was someone that has, owns two lots in that subdivision, wanted to combine the two parcels into one parcel. We had one there and also one in Winchester Hills that they combined the parcels. We had a preliminary plat that was approved by the planning commission. It was for the Ava Jean subdivision. This is up in Danrem Valley. It was a flag lot that was prior to the subdivision ordinance. And going through the subdivision, this was a seven-lot lot split. And then this is one of the lots that was in that lot split. And since there hadn't previously been a subdivision done on that, it was handled as a lot split, we, it's coming through as a new subdivision, but it's taking this larger parcel and dividing it into two parcels. It's for Grandma and is giving some property to her granddaughter. We had a conditional use for Rocky Mountain Power Substation, which is located, or will be located, just kind of south of the Shooting Sports Plex near the Herken city line. And then we had a preliminary plat review for the Valley View subdivision. That subdivision name will probably be changing because there are several subdivisions in the county with similar names, and so, but it's for a three-lot subdivision located just east of the fire station. Each of the lots is about two acres in size, which is larger than those that are in the neighboring parcels to the west, sorry, to the east. I think that's.
The which fire station?
The one on Main.
Oh, that one, okay. I had a question on the substation. Did they get all of their right-of-way access issues resolved?
Yep. All the right-of-way access issues have been resolved in any easements. Those documents that describe those easements have been recorded over at the recorder's office.
Okay, very good.
And then just one other item. Conditional use extension was granted by the planning commission for the Chipsum Mine, which is located about five miles west of town. And it was the, as with the conditional use, when a conditional use is approved, it's approved for one year period of time unless the work has been completed. And so because in the past several years, no onsite work had been, had begun, they've been coming in on a yearly basis and requesting conditional use extension.
Has anything started?
Yes. So one thing that's different is this year, they've begun work, and so they are out there right now, I believe, as Western Rock is putting in the road for them, and then is also going to be doing some of the mining for them. They've received water.
They're building their own now?
Yeah, the road's under construction right now, and they'll begin mining shortly. One of the things that we're staying on top of, or hoping to stay on top of, is just the amount of dust out there. They do have several water trucks, and they're trying to stay on top of it, but it's been pretty dry. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, just with a note, there was a lot of conditions put on that from here, and so.
Yes.
Just make sure you stay on top of it, make sure they're following all this. They made several representations about what they're going to do out there, so let's make sure they follow.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. All of the conditions that were approved at the original approval for the conditional use have been carried on each year with the extension, minus one of them that had to do with, I think it was monitoring of air quality. It said something about St. George monitoring the air, if I remember right, and St. George didn't have the equipment to monitor it. So that was removed, but that was removed three years ago from the conditions.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott, for the report.
Scott didn't take 20 minutes, so I guess I can take 30, is all right? So I just wanted to let everyone know that we've been working to try to facilitate the acquisition of end holdings within the Red Crest Desert Reserve, and we've just recently received word from BLM that the local BLM office has been given the go-ahead to proceed with the Long Valley Land Exchange. Now, that doesn't mean that that's going to happen tomorrow. There's still a lot of work that needs to happen before a decision is made. For instance, the cultural mitigation plan needs to be developed, it needs to be completed. Surveys need to be done at the property, appraisals need to be completed, an environmental assessment needs to be done, public comment period, all of those things need to happen before any kind of a decision to actually exchange the lands will occur. But that's a big hurdle to get it out of the Washington office and back here to the local and state office so that they can continue to work on all these things that I just outlined.
I think we've been about four years getting to this point, and I think the state office said they thought we could be completed in a year from now. Cross our fingers and hope that that happens, so.
For a single little transfer or so.
Yeah. Other things that you're aware of, that we continue to work with the Fish and Wildlife Service and our other partners to try to keep moving our permit renewal request along. And there's a lot of moving parts in that that we continue to work with and on, and but we feel like that there's some movement at least going on in that arena. So we're, again, hopeful that that will proceed and won't take four years, so. And the other thing that's going on is that BLM has released its draft resource management plan for not only the Red Cliffs.
plan for not only the Red Cliffs National Conservation Area, but the Beaver Dam Wash National Conservation Area and the St. George Field Office RMP amendment. So we've been involved in reviewing that draft plan, and will be involved with the BLM in making comments as it pertains to the Red Cliffs National Conservation Area and Red Cliffs Desert Reserve.
And I believe there's an open house tonight at the Dixie Center.
There is.
On that plan.
There is an open house for, and the public is all invited to come and participate in that. It's at the Dixie Center from six to eight P M.
And tomorrow night over at Hurricane and the City Office Building, I think.
Correct.
So there's hours, and Thursdays in Salt Lake.
Thursdays in Salt Lake City.
Definitely easier to go here if you want to.
I know commissioner, in the last commission meeting, I said that, you know, the county was working on some model comment that people could use. The plan's taken us a little bit more time to work through than I anticipated. It's thirteen hundred pages, but that, that model comment is drafted now. I'm going to, we'll be running it through some people, but hopefully we'll have that up in the next week or so on the website, so people can, if they're, if they want to know what the county's concerns are, they can look at that. And then it's just, you can just email comments in, and there are instructions to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our agenda, so we will be adjourned. Thank you for being here.